Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Kurt.
Curtis here.
Yeah, I'm here.
I'm here.
I am seeing that it's about 7:02. I've started the recordings. Do you want me to go ahead and give public comment instructions?
Uh, yeah, please. We have a quorum, so.
Yep, so.
Do you see the pictures, Steve?
Excuse me?
Do you see any picture? I see you and Paul.
Yeah, I don't think people have turned their video on.
It says you have it stopped.
You're having a video.
Right.
Apparently.
I have it stopped.
It doesn't give you the option.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says you cannot start your video because the host hasn't stopped.
How do I start it again? How about that blinking cloud? If you go on participants, you can see that there's a cloud blinking there. I've never seen that before. Hold on a second.
Oh, the cloud is the recording.
The cloud is, okay. Huh.
It was like that at the zoning hearing board meeting too. But I. Yeah, but I didn't realize that I, as the host, was present preventing it.
You realize that now?
Well, the only reason I realize that now is because I'm not the host and it's telling me the host is preventing me.
Can you just go under video, like video settings, maybe?
I'm trying. I've never had this problem before.
Yeah, I've never experienced it. It might have been something when you set up the meeting, so you might not be able to change it.
That's entirely possible.
Yeah, but I've, I mean, I just did one last night and everybody was on fine. Are we okay moving ahead without video?
I, I think as long as our applicants have the ability to, you know, show what they want to see on, have seen on the screen, then we're probably.
Yeah.
Well, you, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, you can see that I have the agenda up?
Yes.
And we see Paul's picture. He represents us today.
God save us.
A little overdressed for the meeting call.
I, yeah, I don't wear a tie much anymore.
Um. I, I don't know what to say. I've tried everything I know to do this.
Yeah, I tried a quick Google search, but I'm not finding anything super helpful.
You know, they recently released a new Zoom version. Maybe it has something to do with that.
Yeah, but I, last night it was fine. I'm using the same version I used last night. Well, if, if it's all right with everybody, we'll get started. If we have problems, we'll go from there. Everybody can hear us, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe so.
Everybody?
All right, so when we do roll call, it'll be important that people make sure they answer and, but if you can, I will go ahead and go through the process for for taking public comment this evening. Uh, we will be taking public comment one of four ways. You can drop public comment off in the blue box that's outside the township building prior to the meeting. I have checked that box. There was no public comment in it. You can also make public comment by raising your hand at the appropriate time when the chair calls for public comment related to each one of the two cases or plans that we're looking at this evening. The, in addition to raising your hand, if you're on a iPhone, you can raise your hand by phone. If either one of those two, you find that you've done, been unable to raise your hand for any reason, and that's obviously your virtual hand. If you've been unable to do so, you can go ahead and, I apologize, yeah, you can send an email to publiccomment@newtown township.org. Again, that's publiccomment@newtown township.org, and that is all spelled out without any spaces. Again, public comment is one word, Newtown Township is one word. Again, it's public comm, publiccomment@newtown township.org. You can send an email. If you're calling in by phone and you're going to send an email to ask to speak, please make sure you use the phone number which you called into the Zoom meeting on, so we know which phone to recognize. And also, please give your name. A reminder to the public, when you do speak, we do request that you give your name and address for the record so that we have that properly in the record. Mr. Chairman, I will turn the meeting back over to you. Curtis, you're muted.
Kathy, can you do roll call, please?
Sure. Please, everybody be ready to respond whether you're here or not. Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mr. Guy?
You.
Ms. Frisora? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Winterhalter?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we'll, we'll do a moment of silence. Okay, and to, for the planning members, anybody have any comments on the agenda before we move forward? I'm assuming that's fine. First up, we have the minutes from last meeting, which would be October 22 to approve. Did we have any comments on those?
Um, I have a comment. I was present at that meeting and I also, I voted for the motion for approval. This is Reed Smith.
Yep. You got that, Kathy?
Yes. I think we, I think there's some weird thing in the minutes thing, and we have to update that somehow to make sure you're permanently added, Mr. Smith.
Any other comments?
No.
Do we have motion to approve the minutes from October 22?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed? Minutes are approved. So next up, we have applicant RAD Toronto on 20 Clover Lane. Are they, is the applicant here?
If the applicant would please raise their hand so we can recognize you. Okay. Okay, hold on a second. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have three hands raised. I'm gonna go ahead and promote them all.
Okay.
All right. I believe the three applicants have all been brought over as participants. They would need to unmute to be able to be heard.
This is Tom Hall.
Okay. Mr. Hall, are you representing the applicant or are you the applicant?
I am the architect.
Okay.
Representing the applicant.
Okay.
Hi, this is Alyssa Downe, one of the applicants.
Yeah, Rich Downs in the line as well, another one of the applicants.
So, Mr. Chairman, would you like the applicant to give their presentation?
Oh, yes, please. Please go ahead.
All right. Good evening. This is Tom Hall. I'm the architect and I prepared the drawings that you have on your screen. We're proposing, we're at 20 Clover Lane. Our proposal is for a 499 square foot addition to the rear of the existing structure. It's a one-story addition. As you can see on the site plan, we've, we've listed building cover, lot area, and impervious coverage, which is, I'm told that's not an issue in Newtown Square. In any event, we've also shown parking spaces on existing paving. It's currently there. So what's on your screen is the shaded area that you see in the rear of the building is where the addition is. It's approximately, it's approximately 13 by 23, I believe. And I did receive a copy of a letter from, uh, I believe that letter was from Giovanna by Akono, uh, one through, one through 11 and then one through fif, one through 15. We're interested in land development approval so that we can proceed with this rather simple one-story addition. It also includes a new deck. We're tearing down an existing deck and building a, a small deck at the rear corner, the rear left-hand corner.
Is this a proposed commercial use?
This is to be used for office.
Okay.
What is the current use? Is it office now?
I believe it was two apartments. Is that correct, Rich?
Yeah, it was two. So we own 18 Clover Land. The, um, the office next door, uh, it's like 1800 square foot. My son joined the business, my daughter joined the business. So we need some more office space. Became available, so we're looking just to bump it out. So we have enough offices for, um, my kids as well as some, um, office staff, so, yeah.
We also have plans to improve the, the building from a visual aesthetic standpoint as well from the street and around all four sides.
Are you looking for any relief on this, or is it all consistent with our zoning and planning requirements?
We're not looking for relief.
Okay.
We believe we're consistent with planning and zoning.
Curtis, if I may?
Yeah.
They would need a waiver if they wanna combine the plan to preliminary final submission. They would need a waiver from that, and I'd also like to say that we did not have use information when we reviewed the plans. The plan up on the screen actually is an updated version, which we have not reviewed. So I was not aware it was an office use. So we'd have to do a little more detailed review on that to make sure they are complying with requirements for that use. We did have some, you know, a lot of kind of administrative comments on our review letter, but there were a few which I thought the planning commission should review and discuss. Number eight on the letter was with regards to sidewalks and number nine was with regards to curbing. There is, there are no sidewalks on the street presently, but there is some curbing. And I know it's been the planning commission's desire to kind of improve the, the walkability and the the street a little bit in the township, so something for, it's open, I think you guys should discuss.
Are there more plans or is this the only plan for the project?
We submitted floor plans and elevations to, I believe that was over to Catherine.
I saw that. I'm talking about site plans with grades, with stormwater management if required, things of that sort.
There's no stormwater management that I'm aware of. If we're, if we're under the 500 square feet, the, the site is, is a gentle grade from the parking lot in the front from the street moving toward the rear. Grades away from the rear of the building. We, we don't have a, I can certainly look at a USG survey and approximate the grades. But we're not changing grades on the site.
Giovanna, is anything of that sort required?
Um, I, I think for, for this plan, I, well, now knowing it's a, like I said, I was not aware that it was gonna be changing use to a, to more, I mean, it is, it's a zoned commercial, so it's allowable use, but obviously, we, you know, we need to look at parking and things like that to make sure they have compliance for, for all of that, so I think another, another round of review is gonna be required now that there's some additional information that's been provided which may impact, you know, their site and may require some grading information and may require some stormwater depending on compliance with all the potential requirements.
And what did you, what did you think the use was when you reviewed it?
I thought it was residential. I mean, it's in a commercial zone, but when you look out, you know, at the street view in Google and it, it looks like a house. There's no, there's no signage or anything.
So this, this is a little street that goes by D and K, but right behind the old McDonald's.
Yeah, you know, the dance studio used to be there if you are of my generation.
Yeah, there is commercial stuff there.
Right. Some of it is.
If you look out the front window, you're looking at the rear of the shops.
Right.
From the center. And the parking, it's all paved. The last, the last building on the street.
Can you explain just how the parking works in terms of the number of, of required parking spaces and the way the parking is configured? Since it's, it appears to be uh, not a traditional parking layout, so I don't know, Giovanna, you know, what the requirements are. Is that something that we need to be concerned with, that it's nose-to-tail parking rather than in a lot?
Right, and then whether they have the, the number, I mean, they, they says five to seven people on the plan you have in front of you there. It looks like they have more than likely parking is gonna be one for every employee plus some guest parking based on.
So you're allowed to park that way is my question.
Well, I don't think the ordinance is that specific.
Okay, gotcha.
But obviously, they, they would have to designate that as staff parking. You wouldn't have guests parking there.
Right.
Um, but I'm not sure they meet parking requirements based on our code.
Okay.
Giovanna, can you, can you remind me the code requirement one more time?
I, I'm looking it up now because, like I said, I didn't have this information in, in our review, so I'm trying to pull that up now.
Because we would be, is, is that figured on a net square footage or a gross square footage?
All right, so you're, you're required to have one space for each employee on the largest working shift and then offices, one space for every 200 square feet of gross floor area. And then where the office building exceeds 1,000 square feet, there shall be four and a half parking spaces for each multiple of 1,000 square feet.
Where it exceeds how much?
1,000 square feet. This is all found online on the ordinance, on the zoning, under the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Giovanna, the gentleman mentioned, Mr. Hall mentioned that there was not impervious requirements. There is impervious requirement.
There is. I'm, I'm not sure what he's referring to, but he, the, the proposed plan is 499 square feet, which, which puts them under the stormwater threshold. But they are meeting the allowable percentages for building coverage and impervious coverage.
Are there any egress issues associated with the second floor that get triggered when it becomes office?
I don't, I don't believe so.
That would be an Andy question.
Typically, it's 3,000 square feet or greater.
That you would need is a second means.
The second means. That's my recollection. I can check within, check the code book.
And it was residential before you, the owner required it?
No.
No, okay. So it's been some kind of commercial for a while.
It says, the plan says, the planning I have in front of you says it's two apartment units.
But it was commercial. It's been commercial.
It's zoned commercial, but the use was apartments? Correct?
My mistake.
So they were not apartments?
I think they were apartments.
When you look at these buildings, both of them, they look residential. I was there over the weekend. It just, there was nobody there, but they definitely didn't look residential.
Right.
Not that it matters much, but if the use is, is office occupation, then it should be regarded as such, regardless of what it used to be, I think.
Yeah, I was merely looking that, you know, if we're looking at this use now, just making sure we have all the second means of egress or whatever else we might need, which you would need for a home. That's all.
Right. No, uh. Well, we would, we would certainly cover that when we submit for building permits with our architectural plans for the renovation and the addition.
Right.
And if we need a second means of egress, we would show one, of course.
So what we have in front of us is the driveway, the addition and the deck. Is that accurate?
Sounds correct. By the way, the existing garage is not, not being used or any other than just basic storage, just to the right of the plan.
Yeah, it looks like they closed up the door. I'm looking at a street view.
Yeah, it, they did close up the front door. We, we may install another door, however, it's not to be used as office. It's a different level altogether.
The driveway, though, it's my understanding that there are no changes to the driveway based on the plans we reviewed.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. I'm, I was looking at the shading and the street view. It looked like maybe it was changing. Okay.
Yeah, that's the existing mecanum. Pretty good shape, too.
So you're just going out the back with an addition and a deck?
Right, and the addition sits above uh, the level of the grade, so it would be, we'd end up with essentially like a four-foot crawl space beneath the addition.
Well, I don't see anything that complicated here that I would be uncomfortable with a contingent recommendation that Giovanna gets everything she needs and everything sort of remains copacetic with our requirements. Any other thoughts?
What are we doing about the sidewalks and?
Sidewalks, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I think there's gonna be a parking issue with five to seven employees and then requiring additional parking. I, I don't think they have that space. Cause they need another 200, they need another 200 square feet, 200. I went back on ordinances here. I'm going back and forth.
While I'm tabbing down the street, there's not a lick of sidewalk on either side.
Correct.
And it doesn't lead, lead to anywhere. It's the end of that little street.
Yeah, people walk on the street. There's not much traffic. It's, it's fairly, it's safe.
So they may want to apply for waiver for, for sidewalk.
We can do that? Sure. We'll, we'll calculate the square footages for Giovanna and for Andy uh, with respect to the office areas. I mean, we shouldn't have to park the bathroom and the kitchen. Obviously, we shouldn't have to park the garage either because there's no one working in those spaces.
And it was a one per 200 plus one per employee, did you say, Giovanna?
It was one per 200 and one per employee. I believe you. I'm gonna pull that back up. I, I'm, uh.
One per each employee on the most populated shift.
Right.
For 200 square feet. Gross square.
Gross floor, gross, yep.
And 4.5 per thousand where it exceeds 1,000 square feet.
So let's call it 2,000 square feet.
The building itself, based on their coverage, they're saying we have 1,400 square feet of building coverage.
Plus the 499.
So we're at 1942?
Right. 200, so it's like 10? That's like 17 spaces.
Well, I don't think I don't think we have space for that.
No. Are we sure that it, boy, it's an awful lot of space.
Office buildings, wholesale and industrial uses, one parking space for 200 square feet of gross floor area.
Cause I see like, you know, five, you know, one per 300 feet, maybe it's 400 feet. Yeah, it just seems, I mean, if that's the code, that's the code. But I mean, that's an awful lot of spaces.
Yeah, it seems odd.
We're, we're not.
Well, I think, you know, this is, it's a smaller office building than what we're typically used to seeing within the township.
Yes, it's inefficient uh, relative to office buildings. So I think the code was probably addressing more efficient office buildings with parking lots. Um, we, we'd rather not pave additional green space.
How is the, what is the usage besides the seven uh, office people? Are people coming in and out of the building?
Very rarely. So if I can jump in, so this is Rich, I'm the owner. So it's going to be, there's going to be three or four people tops in this, in this office twice a week. I mean, this is going to be rarely used, just like the one to the left, the 18 Clover Lane. The reason for wanting this property and having office spaces, because we've just grown to a point we need somewhere to sit down and do some thickening, some planning. So it's not going to be, uh, as you can see, if you've been down the road, we're, we're not even the, the building to the left, 18 Clover Lane very often. You know, we have some service state classes. We have three or four people and they're doing some training. They'll never be more than, you know, six or seven people at one time and that'd be twice a month. So as far as overflowing the end of the cul-de-sac, that's not going to be an issue at all. So want to make that clear. And we do have parking to the left because we own both the properties. Uh, I think we have at least seven stalls to the left. So if we did have a gathering of some training with some managers and so forth, the most we would have is, you know, 10 people and we have plenty of parking spots for both of those. So just to weigh in a bit.
Thanks, Rich. On that note, as the existing property and your existing use of the property, I think that makes sense. Is there someone, maybe Giovanna or somebody that can provide a little color on if the property were sold? And this were to move forward and then the parking issue becomes somebody else's problem?
Right.
Are, are we good there or?
Not, not really because you can't, you know, they might end up selling off one property and not the other. So the thought of, oh, we can use the property next door for parking becomes invalid. And I, and I wouldn't say that they could park onto the street because there's like a loading zone on the back of that commercial building across the street there. Um, there are parking spaces across the street, it looks like, um, in the shopping center, but um.
There's also public transportation at the center also, right?
Yes.
Which is helpful.
Would the applicant consider a reverse subdivision, putting the two together on single parcel?
Sure.
Then, yeah, then you're, then it's package.
There you go.
And then your parking, the other house looks much smaller. So maybe you pick up.
That's gonna open up, yeah, that'll open up other cans of worms for them because then they're definitely will have to do stormwater combining the two properties. Cause they're proposing additional impervious on the other property too.
Just tell us how to get it done and we'll get it done.
Say that again, Rich?
I said, just tell us how to get it done and we'll get it done. This is not going to be a high use building. I just wanted some growth for my kids to join the business. So um, yeah, I get what you're doing. You're protecting the township. I live in a township. That came before this, uh, this board two years ago. I live in White Horse, Fort Brighter Lane, love, love the area. You know, pay taxes in the community and all that stuff. Just tell us what to do and we'll do it. No problems.
Sounds good.
Is it possible perhaps?
Giovanna, is the parking, parking would become a zoning issue, correct?
Correct.
So they would have to go before zoning?
Yes.
So one option would be is to let them go before zoning and let, let, let zoning restrict to whatever they want, however they want to on that part. And that way, if it does go with the property, it restricts it going forward.
Right.
And that would take care of their need. And I think you're right. I think if we join the two, there does, it does add up for some stormwater management that they may not want to do. The only thing that I think this group ought to consider is because of some of the issues, even if we don't put in sidewalks, I think we ought to consider some curbing. We're having some issues in certain areas uh, without curbing. And we're really, I think we ought to consider that. But other than that, I, if we could figure out how to get them to zoning and limit the limit the number of people in the building so that they don't have to do more to the parking. I think that uh, the township wins by not adding impervious coverage.
Steve, if uh, the next project, if 18 has more parking than needed, can they do a cross easement and record it?
That can be reversed. They're both, they're the same party on both ends.
Yeah. I mean, I yeah, I, I don't know what the best legal stand there is.
Yeah, I mean, it's something I, I've seen done, but I think it's worth talking to Rich on.
Yep.
And, and getting his input on the best way to kind of proceed with something like this project.
Yeah. If it's all right with the applicant, I'll engage the township solicitor. They'll probably be, I assume there's an escrow on this. Um, and we'll, we'll get, we'll figure out what the best way forward is.
Appreciate it. So you're not, you're not proposing any additional paving over at 18?
I, I'm, if, if there's seven parking spaces over at 18 and it more than meets the requirement of 18, what we're going to try to do is either one do a cross easement or have you go to zoning and have the zoning restrict the number of people that can be in the building um, to cover what you need to have covered. I, I'm looking here, if, if you're not having public come into the building and it's employees, um, and based on how you have cars stacked, I count 10 spaces and unless my math is wrong, at 200 square feet worth of building space, I come up with 10 spaces. So that's the, and I don't know if it meets all of our other codes. And that's why we've got people like Giovanna and Andy and the attorney, but that's, I'm just looking at that and saying I could get 10 cars on that spot there based on what I'm looking at. And you're saying that happens twice a month? So.
No, it happens maybe twice a year, frankly. So I mean, but I get it. You guys got to do what you gotta do, but this is crazy.
Well, no, I, I think what we're trying to do is make it simple and not, and not make it harder than it has to be.
So just tell me again, just tell me, coach me up and you know, there'll be nobody in these parking spots 27 days of the month.
Yeah.
Nobody. Unfortunately, so. But for training and different reasons, I think this is the right thing for our business. Uh, fortunately we've grown to a point where we need some training facilities and that's what we want to do here a little bit. So yeah, just tell me how to do it.
Yep. Let me, let me just get with our attorney and look at both of these pro, both of these pieces and see what's the best way forward. And hopefully what's the least expensive for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So with regards to sidewalks and curbing, what's the planning commission's opinion?
Is there, is there curbing that can readily be driven over by car, you know, it's just the way their parking areas are set up?
I think it might be a swell in where the parking area kind of blends in with the street, like a small.
Is it a gutter curb?
No, it's, it's all blacktop.
Okay.
But it, 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 it looks like it could flow along the edge. I don't know if there's an inlet down at the end. There is an inlet down at the end of um, Clover that it all flows to. It looks like they almost have a, an asphalt berm at the end of the property. Um.
Yeah, I see an inlet there.
Yeah, there is no um, real curbing. And, and if they put it in, it would, you know, be a depressed curb along most of that frontage with maybe an upright curb towards the end in the green area.
And they have some paving like a curb there already, it looks like.
Yeah, it's an asphalt berm, which is what we're trying to shy away from.
That's what I'm trying to get rid of.
We're having lots of issues with those and people putting them in and.
Every time we plow, we end up tearing them up.
So I guess that'll stay on our agenda once we kind of deal with the zoning parking issue?
Well, you could probably, um, um, if you approved a condition on them getting the zoning parking issue uh, taken care of, uh, that way we, I mean, I'm trying to keep you from potentially having to meet in December if there's not something else to go on the agenda for December, but if not, then we can be back in December.
So would we say like minimum number of spaces?
Yeah, I think that if, if you said that it met either the zoning requirement through combination of the two properties or whatever the requirement would be. I mean, obviously if we do a reverse subdivision, we're back before you. Um, i- if, if Rich can say an easement works and you're in agreement with that, then if they put the easement together and you know, that, or if it's something that has to go to zoning, let them go to zoning in the mid, in the middle of December and then not have to come back to you if they get the zoning requi, if they get the zoning relief that's required.
And so I'm counting five, six, seven, eight, and is that hashed out space? Is that parking? Is that high handicap?
Yes.
I don't know that they're striping there now.
No, there's not. No.
You'd also need dimensions on all those spaces.
I'm just arguing if they're stacking, they could stack two more in front of the two that are too deep.
I'm with you now. I get it.
And I'm saying if you do that, you get 10. And if I, if I use one per 200 square feet and we say that it's a total of uh, basically 2,000 square feet, I get 10.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
But it's up to the planning commission as a whole, what they'd like to do.
Anybody else have comments on sort of facilitating a one time with this, subject to zoning and Giovanna?
I, I, I agree with what I think you're suggesting.
I support it also.
I would be in agreement with it.
Yeah. I can agree to that, but what are we doing about the curb part?
Well, that, that, I guess to me that was kind of the Giovanna will work out, you know, what the right answer is for that.
Okay.
Scenario. You know, mechanically what will handle the, you know, whatever water we need to handle.
And you guys are okay with no sidewalks, the giving a wave, well, the ordinance says generally requires sidewalks that can be waived by the board? I don't know if it necessarily.
You know, I, I, I would say if this were a property that were on 252 or Westchester Pike or some other you know, kind of um, section like that, I wouldn't, in this situation, just knowing it and the sidewalks that aren't there already, I, I'm okay with it.
I mean, there's not even a sidewalk at the Starbucks on Route 3.
Yeah, right.
On this road. Maybe there is on Route 3. I'm not up there, but there's yeah, it starts only on Route 3, but this entire road, there's not a lick of sidewalk.
Yeah.
Then they would need a waiver from sidewalks, a waiver from preliminary land development. Um, and we'll get them to install curbing.
Yeah, yeah, curbing, just tell me when we want the curves. We'll put the curves in, you know, we're, we're we'll make it happen. Just, um, you know, we want to get this thing going. So curbs, not a problem. Do I curb? We'll put curbs in. Great.
Probably a depressed curb will work the best here.
Thank you.
And I, I think you would also want them, I think you would also want them to comply with all of uh, Giovanna's, whatever her review comments are. And it will be a new letter because she's going to review this based on being office space.
Yeah.
Kurt, not to put you on the spot, but can you put this one together?
Yeah, I'm trying to write this down, just right.
This is a tough one, but I think we can.
Well, Kathy's, Kathy got us our uh, the preliminary part, which is good. So I'm thinking zoning approval, minimum of 10 spaces. Anybody have a comment on that?
Well, it has to be consistent with, with what is required, right?
Yeah, I don't know that you want to put a space on there. Just put zoning approval.
I, I, I guess I kind of want to
make sure that they have enough.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I just, you know, we've kind of thought through a number looking at it visually. And you know, if we're going to let it kind of just go away, I kind of would like to put a minimum on, but I'm willing to be convinced that that creates a bigger problem than it's worth.
I mean, but keep in mind that the zoning hearing board is going to make a decision on the information that is presented to them.
I guess we're locked into what they decide anyway.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, nevermind.
You could just see compliance with all parking requirements as indicated by zoning and approved by the zoning hearing board.
But could we say that we support the, the, the establishment of the 10 spaces as evidenced on the plan?
You could, but your report I don't believe goes to the zoning hearing board. So I don't know that it impacts their decision. The applicant will have to go and make their case and.
Now, will the zoning hearing board look at both sites together?
Probably not.
Because they are owned by different entities.
Right. They, and they, and the other site is not requesting any zoning relief at this point. So they, they will not.
But to that point, Giovanna, I think one of the things Andy had brought up with the case last month regarding commercial entities, we don't have anything on our zoning that addresses accessory structures. So potentially the shed.
What do you mean? We don't have, I mean, we don't have it for commercial uses. We address accessory structures, but not specifically indicating like sizes on commercial uses.
Right, exactly. Which means what?
They shouldn't have to go to zoning. It doesn't state that they do.
I think that was something that Andy had been struggling with.
Oh, is there any public comment? Steve, can you check?
I'm looking. I don't see any hands raised at the moment. And give me a moment. There's nothing in the public comment inbox.
Yeah, the only person that may have a comment be Kathy. She's to her left and, you know, I've talked to her and she's fine with the shed as well as this, uh, you know, little addition here, so.
Okay, I think I can make a motion. Okay, I think I can make a motion. Uh, I make a motion that we recommend approval for the proposed four hundred ninety-nine square foot addition and deck for the property of Clover Lane located in the C one district. Uh, we rec, and recommend granting a waiver uh, for a combined preliminary and final land development process. And also recommend that we waive the requirement for sidewalks at the site with the following conditions. That the applicant meets all requirements that's noted in the STANTEC letter dated November twelfth, twenty twenty, and any future letter arising from, you know, revised plans. Uh, that they will, uh, comply with parking requirements, subject to, uh, zoning board review, which they may pursue. And subject to providing curbing or, or other requirements as determined by STANTEC along the driveway for, uh, would I say stormwater runoff.
I'll second that motion. Paul Winter, hold your second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? The motion carries?
Thank you, Kurt, good work there.
Yep.
Yep. Hey, thank you, everybody. Yep, thank you, thanks for, uh, seeing it through with us. Absolutely, want to do the right thing. Yep, appreciate it.
Okay, next up. Same personnel, I assume, for the shed?
Yes.
Yeah, so if I can jump in, this is Rich, so all we need here, and you could tell me, you know, I threw it, it's a professional shed made by Rich's sheds. I just need to sort our, our end of month paperwork, the government mandates, we hold things for seven years. And no power is nothing to this thing, other than just storing papers, literally, that's it, so. There are sheds all up and down the street. Our next door neighbor has a shed, Kathy, it's kind of, I may help her out, it's kind of falling apart and some folks down the lane there, so. That's all I need. If, if you say it's too big, you want to move it, just tell me what is okay. And we just want to get this thing built, because we've been trying to do this since June, so. That was Rich, that's where we're at with this one.
And do we need any waivers on this, or are we?
Yeah, it's going to be the same thing, the, the letter is almost identical. Um, because it's considered a land development, so you're still required all of that same information, um, with the sidewalks and the curbing.
Regardless of where he puts it on the property?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, it's kind of crazy.
It's because it's commercial.
Yeah, I understand. That's all it wants to shed, so just tell me how to do it and we'll do it. You want some curbs, we'll do the curbs in the front here too. I don't know where you can put them, but, you know, whatever you want.
I think if we just make it curbing from both properties together and then, and then have them, if you're okay with everything else, I think you could do it basically everything the same except leave off the zoning requirement for parking.
But there, there won't be any revised plan on this, so the STANTEC ladder is good?
That's up to Giovanna, but I would think-
Yeah, the, there, we're, this plan that you have in front of you on the screen was not the plan we reviewed. Um, so it was something that we need to re-review the plan to make sure that they have complied. Um, and I guess it's worth, it sounds like Andy might have some concerns about, and I know he and I have talked about how the, um, accessory structures section of the ordinance is not specific with regards to sizing on the sheds, I mean, it talks about specifics on R one, R two, R three, and, and what you're limited to. So, I have not spoken to him on this project, so I'm not sure if he feels there might be some additional relief that might be needed with regards to zoning for the shed. Um, our zoning comment was just regards to building percentage coverages and building height clarification, which it looks like, um, I don't see that on the plan that you have in front of you, so I'm not sure if they've addressed it or not. You could, uh, do the letter in contingent upon review by the zoning officer.
Is this, is its placement within the setback requirements?
Yes.
Our zoning, um, section that addresses accessory structures only speaks to residential accessory structures. It does not speak to commercial accessory structures. And off the top of my head, I don't believe the C one zoning section of the zoning code addresses commercial accessory structures. So that, that would be Andy's concern.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think Andy could review it. We did review those, you know, the accessory structure section, and they comply with the requirements that are there now. But, you know, I, I don't know what Andy's thoughts are. It might be something that at, at some point we have to amend the zoning ordinance to include something for commercial accessory structures.
Well, and thankfully, we're in the middle of doing that.
But that wouldn't be made applicable to this application.
Right, right.
It would not.
That would just be for future applications.
I mean, the, the ordinance does speak to, you know, all accessory structures, and then it speaks to residential accessory structures, so.
Any other planning questions, or I'll, I'll turn it over to the public, just see if we have any public comment?
Again, I just checked the public comment box, though I don't see anything, and I do not see any hands raised.
Giovanna, I think, this is Tom Hall. Uh, what we, the, the most recent plan that we sent to you recently has dimensions on it for the shed. I think that was essentially the only adjustment and the couple signature blocks that we did put on there.
Yeah, I didn't get those plans. I'm not sure if you sent them to Kathy or if you can send them to me via email, that would be great. I didn't get this plan or the other plan revised.
Sure, I'll take care of it.
And then we'll review and issue an updated review letter.
Do we need an impervious count on this, Giovanna?
We do, it was in our comment letter.
So if we could get that as well on the plans before you send them, that would be the best thing.
I didn't realize the plans that they sent me were different than what were submitted.
Yeah, you have an updated version, it looks like.
Yeah, I requested plans for the electronic plans for the meeting, but I didn't realize they were different.
Yeah, not, no worries.
So if there aren't more comments, so I am, uh, looking at a recommendation waiving preliminary final land development or waiver for that, uh, granting a waiver, not requiring sidewalks, meeting the STANTEC letter of the seventeenth and any future letters, contingent upon zoning officer review and subject to providing curbing or other that will address stormwater subject to STANTEC approval. Does that seem to fit the bill?
Sounds like it.
I would say yes. Sounds good.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval um, for the proposed two hundred and forty square foot shed at eighteen Clover Lane located in a C one district. And that, uh, recommend granting two waivers, one for the combined preliminary and final land development submission and two for the requirement for sidewalks uh, with conditions that the applicant, uh, meets required, uh, meets the requirements of the STANTEC letter dated eleven seventeen twenty twenty and any future letters that may be provided by STANTEC. And that the plan will be contingent upon zoning officer review. And that, uh, the applicant will be subject to providing curbing or other that will address stormwater uh, along the front, subject to STANTEC approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you, you go.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, um, your next item on the agenda is your ordinance review. Um, I believe that, uh, I, I've announced and I, hopefully it's been communicated to all the board members that or all the commission members that, uh, our intent is to, uh, put the zoning, uh, rewrite on your agenda in January. Uh, they'll be on the, on the agenda for two meetings in January. Um, the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday, which is your normal meeting. Um, and then we will do the same thing again in February. Uh, I will be meeting with the consultant, hopefully tomorrow, uh, and we will break out, uh, how many, uh, chapters we'll do each evening. A letter will be going out to the entire township, letting them know that. And, uh, that will, uh, go out here at the beginning of December or middle of December, so that everybody has it in plenty of time. Uh, the, the, uh, consultant should be finishing everything up, and we should be able to, uh, have, have the review uh, over the next couple of weeks to make sure everything's in good shape, and that'll be going out to everybody. And you would have, uh, probably like three or four weeks to be able to see it. The public would have three or four weeks to be able to see it prior to the first meeting. So that is the goal, and that's where we're headed. Uh, so any questions from the planning commission?
Did you say there are two, two February, February dates?
Yes, it's the same two Thursdays in January and in February, the, the second and the fourth.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds good. Yeah, I think just, um, just a comment would be that when it's publicized for public review, that we're clear about sort of what our planned portions are for each meeting?
Yes, that's the goal.
So they're, yeah, they're on the same page.
Yeah, once I've met with the consultant, I'll review that with you also, Curtis.
Okay, good. Well, unless we, is that it? We don't have anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Be well, good meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Bye-bye.